Good evening. Welcome to the Q and A session hosted by candidates seeking elections to the Madison School Board. My name is Joanna Hoskins. I'm currently a senior at La Follette High School and I serve on the Madison School Board as this year's student representative. I'm an editor, translator, and columnist here at Simpson Street Rep.
And my name is Leila Fletcher and I began working at Simpson Street when I was in middle. I'm now a student at UW Madison and one of the editors at Simpson Street Rep. Asking questions this evening are four journalists who cover local education. Olivia Herkin of the Wisconsin State Journal, Dylan Brogan of Ismice and Madison's BeCast, Scott Gerard of the Capital Times, and Kajada Ba from Simpson Street Rep Press. Kajada was recently named Wisconsin Journalist of the Year by the Journalism Education Association. Our timekeeper this evening is Brandon Alvarez. Brandon is a La Follette grad and editor for La Prensa Libre de Simpson Street. Answering questions tonight are candidates for seats six and seven on Madison's school board. Ermosener Feltham and Badri Lankhella are running for seat number six and incumbent Nikki Vander Mullen is running unopposed for seat number seven. Tonight's moderator is Taylor Kilgore. Taylor is a graduate from La Follette High School and UW Madison School Journalism. Taylor worked at Simpson Street Rep throughout middle school and high school and she now serves as our manager, managing editor.
Thank you, Joanna and Leila. So our format is simple today. Journalists will ask a question and each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond. Before we conclude, we hope to reserve time for journalists to ask follow-up questions. And journalists can direct follow-up questions to any candidate or all three. Each candidate will also have two minutes for a closing statement. Alright, so let's get started. Our first question is from Dylan Brogan.
The Madison School District has faced a staffing shortage for several years now. Teaching positions are going unfilled. There are fewer substitute teachers. And the district has lost administrators to neighboring districts. The Madison School Board is also currently looking for a new superintendent. So if elected, what would you do to reverse this trend?
We'll go with Badri first.
Yeah, so staffing retention and hire, right? So this is the number one issue we have right now. There are a lot of ways to go about. Encourage our local community to provide the welcoming and highly qualified teachers and right? So there is two ways. The one is the retention is the other one is the recruitment. We're having an issue with both of them. We need to have proper ways to have right policies to make the implementation correctly to work on recruitment side. To have, to simplify the process of recruitment. We are having a lot of issues with the process right now. Encourage existing teachers and staff. Intrinsically and extensively, right? So providing them proper salaries and then also having that motivational. To bring the invite the high quality educators to our district. Those are the things and most importantly, we also have to provide the grants to teachers on training people of color. Where is attention wise, we got to have to have mentoring programs beyond the first year, right? So we have a lot of retention is that staff are leaving within first year. We need to have the cultural competency training for the staff. We need to have more building relationship between the staff, teachers, and community. That is very crucial right now. Everybody's pointing fingers at each other. That is not healthy.
Time's up.
No, thanks.
Alright, thank you. Blair?
I just want to start. It's no, it's no secret that the HR department at MMSD is in need of a revamp. I mean, that's been talked about at board meetings over the past few months extensively. I think even just last night, questions about can we approve this particular consultant about it? And so that's, that's one piece of the puzzle is getting, getting the situation in HR under control. In terms of the in-school, in-school staffing, COLA is the easy answer, right? The cost of living adjustment annually, right? It's, it's hurtful for school staff to have to fight for that every single year. But money is not the only resource that matters when you're talking about this. The workload for school staff is out of control. So protected planning time is a piece of the puzzle there. And voice from the school buildings to decision makers is also important. I know that came up too in the recent report. About sort of like where are we going with the strategic framework stuff? Yeah. And then I think, I think one other piece that I would say here, and we talk about losing administrators to other districts. One thing that is I think an issue in MMSD is administrators don't often get to lead their buildings. There, there's a lot of micromanaging from the top that is not helpful for attracting or retaining staff. I'm good. Thanks.
Alright, Nikki?
Yes, I agree with Blair that that staffing is an issue, but the big issue besides COLA is creating a work environment that is helpful to absolutely everyone. That means you let teachers teach. You don't let, you don't micromanage absolutely everything that they can discuss or teach. You don't ask, need parental approval before you teach anything quote-unquote controversial. Additionally, we need to realize teachers are adults. They are not children. And they shouldn't be treated as such. They're professionals. Their planning time is essential. So is the fact that they have a designated workday. Often they go over it. But it shouldn't be expected and it should not be the norm. I would also revamp HR as much as possible. And again, sorry for my voice.
No problem. Thank you, Nikki. Alright, next question, Olivia.
In 2019, the Madison School Board adopted a goal for the district to use 100% renewable energy by 2040. But the pandemic and budget constraints may make that goal harder to reach. The district has recently discussed pushing it back by a decade. Do you think the district should push back its goal or should it prioritize these climate initiatives on the budget to meet the original 2040 deadline?
Alright, Blair, you can start this one.
Okay, and this is actually one of the areas that I don't know as much about as I wish I knew and I'm looking forward to learning. The basic question, like, should we be committed to these types of things right now? I think the answer is definitely yes. The science is really, really clear that now is the time. Now's past the time. So, so my answer to your question is no, we should not push it back. But I don't, I don't have a lot of deep knowledge about, about that type of thing. I have a lot of questions and ideas. But I can save those for another, another time.
Great. Badri?
Yeah, this is the topic that is touches my heart. That's where I work, right? That's my, all my part of the community and nature. And I've been working for Department of Natural Resources for 20 years, fighting for the same cause, right? Renewable energies, clean water, and then stewardship programs for protecting our lands for future. That's my heart and I will push anything that needs to be to bring to the board to make sure these are the priorities for the future generations. This is what we have to bring to our future generations is we are ruining the planet right now. And, and we have to make these as the top priorities. And yeah, that's all I would say is that's.
Alright, Nikki?
No, I would not push it back a decade. I think that would, I don't think we have a choice. I don't know how much planet we'll have left if we were to do that. Secondly, I know that sounds dire, but secondly, we need to focus on solutions on the broad goal. For example, what our buildings are doing, not just what individuals are doing, what companies are doing. For example, where we get our products from. Those are the areas we could really increase it. Whereas other areas such as total solar power may not be achievable right away. But we can and need to focus on our environmental goals.
Thank you. Our next question is from Scott.
Thank you all. You will help choose the district's next superintendent if you're elected. What will be the key factors in ensuring their success once they begin working here?
Alright, Nikki, go ahead.
Yes, after picking several superintendents, you would think, I hope I can get it right this time. And I really do want to do so. One, what I'm looking for, not just longevity, someone who has a deep caring of the district. Someone who knows how to implement policies, not just discuss policies. How to make sure that we follow through with implementation. Having great ideas is only part. Carrying them out is the most important and we're not doing that. Most importantly, let our teachers teach. And I wanted administrator who could do that without micromanaging. And one who believes that disabled students of special education need to not only be fully integrated into the schools, but have to, have to be included in every report and have the data disaggregated in every report. We just had an equity audit and disability was never even asked about. That's shameful for 14% of the population of MMSD. And that's a low, low number. So those are the things I'm looking for.
Alright, Blair?
Would you mind repeating that question?
Not at all. What will be the key factors in ensuring the success of the district's next superintendent once they begin working here?
That's super cool question. A little bit different than the question I've been asked frequently, which is what, what would you look for in a new superintendent? I appreciate that a lot. I think that the key factor is going to be if we can build citywide trust across all levels of the system. I think the things that it will take to do that are taking a learning stance. I talked about this a little bit on Tuesday, but, but I don't, I don't really buy and I don't, I don't think it's effective to have the like up, up and away orientation towards school or march of progress orientation towards schooling. It's, you know, figuring out what to do for city schools across the nation is, is complicated. And I think that we would do better to, as a city, say, this is a communal project. We've pooled our resources to figure out what's best for our city right now. So I think that if we can get to a place like that, that will be a key to ensuring success. I think another one will be about listening a lot. I, I, most of you have know what I think about the like, we bought the solution and now we're going to implement the solution. You don't know. I hate the phrase rollout. I hate it. I only like the phrase create the conditions for, because if you're rolling something out in a large social institution like a school district, it's just not going to work. And then I would think a lot of community connection.
Alright, Badri?
Yeah, so that's a different type of question we've been asked. So as a board member, what, what I can bring to the administrator, right? So bringing that collaborative leadership to that board, right? So the new board member that coming in would help him to integrate with the board well and also help him with working with the administration and staff, right? So that will come with the community involvement. And an administrator superintendent who's coming in having a lot of that. Yeah, yes, sorry. Thinking about since we have, yeah, just keep going with that one. Sorry about that. So the administrator superintendent that's coming in should have that connection between the community and that's what we have to bring together to make it successful.
Alright, thank you. Next questions for, are from Kajada.
So this question is for candidates for seat six. At Tuesday's forum, candidate Mosener Feltham said, "We talk about science of reading, but there is no science of children and also seem to say that classrooms in Madison are not set up to make the transition to science of reading." Candidate Lankhella was also rather vague on the topic of science-based reading instruction. What do you say to voters who want to know specifically where you stand on the transition to science-based literacy instruction in Madison?
We can go with Blair first.
Yeah, so I'm in favor of transitioning to science, the science of reading versus sort of like, I think, I think what you're asking is about the reading wars of the past 15 years and people who say, oh no, it should be whole language instruction versus science of reading. Is that kind of, kind of what you're asking about?
Yes, as it specifically pertains to Madison.
Yeah, so absolutely think that Madison should be moving towards the phonics-based science of reading, really literacy, no question. When I talk about how there's no science of children, what I mean is that the people who are providing that science of reading-based instruction still need to be thinking about their classrooms holistically and still need to be thinking about the children in front of them holistically. And when I talk about classrooms not being prepared for that, I was talking specifically about some of the, some of the recently adopted curriculum that came with manipulatives, which were not purchased by MMSD. And so to me, that says that we're actually not preparing our staff or preparing our classrooms to teach based on the science of reading in a way that's really going to meet a student's need, not just for reading instruction, but for instruction. How do I want to say this? To prime the kids to be ready for that instruction and to be able to create a classroom environment where that, that instruction is, is part of a larger instructional sort of like universe. I hope that was specific enough.
Thank you. Badri?
Yeah, yeah, definitely, right? I'm all for literacy and science, right? So it's basically, this is classroom engagement issue, right? The root cause of the graduation and literacy and those are all classroom engagement. We have to bring those engagement right now. We need to involve and train staff to bring that to kids. How do we engage more? Using modern technologies, right? So we have computers and everybody using cell phones and we have to tap into those resources and make more learning, more engaging activities. I think that's how we can bring these back to the kids.
Great, thank you. That question was for seat six, so we will move on to the next question from Dylan. We are in round two of our questions.
Thank you. And so this question is from Simpson Street Rep Press students, as is my next one. So thank you for all the hard work. They did, and really the, the time they put in to really come up with some good questions. So according to state data analyzed by education advocate Lori Frost, last year, fewer Madison freshmen and sophomores were doing math and reading at grade level, at grade level compared to where they were before the pandemic. This contributed to the achievement gap that widened for students of color. Is this evidence of, is this evidence of pandemic learning loss? And if so, what should the district do to address it?
We can do Badri this time.
Um, yeah, so this is, yeah, definitely, right? So pandemic loss is the biggest issue that we've been facing and and then the anxiety within the kids when they came back too. So that there is, there's a lot happening to bring back kids back to the school and then learning and it's, we had this issue prior to COVID. But now this is now exaggerated because of this. We need to find better ways, right? So prepare all students for college and future workforce. For that to happen, we need to modernize and modernize the way of education. We need to drastically increase investments in public schools, improve the equity in existing investments, right? And we got to look at this, see this one from the racial lenses as well. All of these policy making because it's, and proportionally, it's not done equally for everybody. So that's, that's another thing we need to make sure we have to implement.
Alright, thank you. Blair?
Yeah, I think that that's evidence of pandemic learning loss for sure. And then what, what do you, what do you do about it? I mean, to me, when I, when I was in, when I was working at West during the pandemic and in the years immediately after, what we saw from students was extremely high levels of need for social emotional support, for community connection, for care, for interpersonal learning supported by adults. And needs for all of that academic learning, right? To, to go back to some of the things that children forgot to, to re, to go back over some of the things that they didn't quite learn when they were staring into their computer screens or not, right? Or napping next to their computer screens. But in my experience, you cannot address academic goals when all of those interpersonal and social emotional goals are ignored. And so to me, they, they have to go together. I have some ideas and some hopes about what we might do that would be creative, that would perhaps use a fifth year. I don't know if it's possible. I don't know if the community would go for it, like I said on Tuesday. I have some ideas and hopes about year-round schooling. I don't know if the community would go for it, but that's where I'm at with that question.
Nikki?
Schools haven't worked for a very long time before the pandemic. I've seen that with special ed. I've seen that with our English language learners. Pandemic just shined a spotlight on every single thing that is not working well in education. People who suffered the most during the pandemic are our black and brown students with disabilities. Because they could not get their needs met. They could not get IEPs filed. Based on that, those are the ones who, who most need comprehensive education and compensatory education. They need additional skills because they were deprived of actual learning. That isn't learning loss. That is us in running the educational system who did not know how to make it accessible for all.
Alright, so our next question is from Olivia.
Data has shown there are disparities in which students are enrolling in standalone honors classes. As a way to improve this, the district has explored ditching honors classes altogether and moving to an earned honor system. Do you support removing standalone honors classes as a way to improve equity and why or why not?
And we'll start with Blair.
Okay, so I'm going to repeat here that I have taught honors in Madison. I have taught three different types of honors, earned honors, which is the one that the board has said that they're going towards now. Standalone honors as well as a third type of honors called embedded honors. I don't necessarily, I don't think that the, the reason to move to standalone, to move to earned honors is just about a numbers game, right? How do you get more students of color earning honors? I also think it's about how do you create classroom communities that reflect the school as a whole and build healthy schools. I've also said a lot, and I'll say it here again, that I think the technical question about whether we offer standalone honors or not is a little bit of a red herring. And then the last thing I want to say about it. No, that's all, that's all I'll say about it.
Alright, Badri?
I am a strong supporter of the standalone honors program. We need to keep that one, right? So we need to provide students all opportunity to excel. I've been contacted by several parents, right? So if, if they don't, we don't provide these, they have to find schools, they will provide these programs and they have to move out. In a post-standardized test world where this colleges are no longer taking standardized test scores, ACT SAT scores for admissions anymore, these are the programs they will be looking at. So we are taking the opportunities out from all of these kids who want these programs to excel. What we have to do, right? This is honors program and advanced learnings are in MMSD is not an issue of academic, it's it is about racial bias, right? We need to find solutions to include rather than actually removing these programs. We need to find, we need to remove the bias and barriers identifying these, implementation these courses. We need to train the teachers, educators on these programs. And tracking coordinating students' progress from the elementary school and middle schools. That's what is missing. Is that we don't have this transition from elementary to middle to school to high school. We're just talking about standalones on high school. Thank you.
Alright, Nikki?
I believe in both standalone and earned honors. I'm in a unique position in that as someone with disabilities, I had to fight to get into standalone honors. I won't use the word that was used at back in the eighties, but I was told, my family was told you had to choose between being disabled and being gifted and you had to pick one. Very simply, I don't want to make that choice for anyone else, the choices that had to be fought for for me. So I want to give everyone the full opportunity to make the decision on their own, because I almost didn't have the right to make it.
Our next question is from Scott.
So the past few years have brought some questions about the balance of power and the roles of the administration and the board. Centering on what governance means in terms of the board's leadership. What is the ideal balance of power and decision-making between the board and administration?
Alright, and we'll go with Nikki for this one.
Yes, the ideal balance is a collaborative one with an understanding that the board makes the decision with the administration. The administration doesn't make the decisions without a board. The board's job is to write policy, develop a budget, and hire or fire a superintendent. Those are our jobs. We need to be involved in the day-to-day and we can be. But the balance is this, we must be open, we must be transparent in order to have a true collaborative relationship. Information can't be given at four, at 4:00 PM for a 5:00 PM meeting. That's not informed consent in any step way, shape, or form. Additionally, we have to make sure that our community is involved. Very simply, we need a hybrid system in which the board sets the policy, superintendent and the administration carried out and tweaked it for each individual.
Alright, Blair?
This is a, this is a super interesting question, I think, because this is something I've been talking to lots of folks about. I think one of, one of the reasons that we're seeing this imbalance of power, this can, this sort of like difficulty knowing is partly because the feedback loops from school buildings, from classrooms, from households, through building principals to district administrators has not really been functioning. And so what happens is community members and staff, like formerly myself, go to the board. So are you seeing this? Like, he- help us out here, right? The thing that's supposed to work to make sure that we have a decision-making structure that's grounded in the realities of the school is not working. And so I think ideally, those systems of feedback and collaboration between district building level and classroom are, are in, are in order. And I think that would do a lot to ease, ease some of the trouble. I also think my, one of my hopes is that board members are able to, to help the superintendent listen. Right? To, to actually be a voice and be, be an ear in the community. To help the superintendent listen, to pass policy that, that helps the superintendent act on what we've heard. Thanks.
Badri?
Yeah, so Nikki got those points right there, talking part. Everybody has a role. Board has a role. Administration has a role. Staff has a role. And it's all defined. It's, it's an easy question. As long as everybody fits into their roles and they do their job correctly. This is an easy job. Don't, right? So board has the policymaking responsibility. Superintendent has the carrying over and, and then administration has the implementation. And then board comes back and looks at that cycle and see, evaluate those, how is that implementation is performed? And then come back again. So if it is not working, let's make a policy. So that's, is a circle, a cycle. And I think as long as everybody's working collaboratively, not pointing fingers at each other, that's what makes this work.
Alright, this next question is from Kajada.
So I would like to follow up on Mr. Gerard's question about decision-making.
So I would like to follow up on Mr. Gerard's question about decision making. It seems that in Madison, our school board sometimes avoids voting on difficult or contentious topics. Do you believe our community benefits when elected school board members discuss in public, then debate, and most of all, vote on difficult issues? Please comment on why or why not?
We'll start with Badri.
Yeah, definitely. I think we are elected to be the voice of the community. And then we work with the board members to collaborate to make sure the voice of the community is being heard and their decisions are made. I am, I do sit on several boards. I have never refrained from voting. I always took the voice from the community and always went with it. I listened to the both sides of the board. I'm a collaborator. I'm not an activist. I don't fight. I actually listen to everybody and try to come to consensus with the community and board members.
All right, Nikki.
Very simply, this has been my biggest frustration on the board has been and always will be. When you're an elected official, you take a stand. Rightly or wrongly, your job is not to consider whether or not you will be reelected or not. Your job is to meet with your community and make the best decision, the information you have. There's no such thing as abstaining because you don't like either position in my book. New years recusing because of a conflict of interest. And outside of that, we're hired to vote. We're hired to debate. We're hired to make a decision. And those are the decisions we have to make. They had to make some of the toughest ones in election years. In fact, I was, I was part of the group that removed police from schools the year of my election, second term in a pandemic. Very simply, these aren't easy calls and they don't always look good. But there's something that needs to be done. Same thing with honors this year was incredibly difficult vote. And people, and believe me, I got hate mail on both sides. I could tell you that my job was to make a decision and I did that and I stand by it.
All right, Blair.
I agree with with Nikki and Badri that that it is important to make those decisions. And it is important to have the public, public discussion. I watched so many school board meetings from other parts of the country in the past handful of years. And I was stunned to find out how many of them passing millions and millions of dollars of, you know, approval, approval of a contract with no discussion. And that freaked me out, like what is happening in that community? But there's no conversation and where is the conversation happening? If not, um, if not in the public meeting. The only thing that I would want to add, uh, I don't think that the sole job of a school board member is to to collect a voice and weigh it out and balance it out and find something in the middle. I think that part of, part of why I'm running is because I think that the board should have expertise about how schools actually work. So that when we're making decisions, we're making them through the lens of how is this gonna work? Is this just something that is gonna, is just taking a stand? Or is this something that's actually going to have a positive impact on the children of our community? What I bring, what I will bring to the board is expertise about how this stuff looks in the classroom, in the school building to make sure that taking a stand actually serves children.
Thank you. Uh, we are going to move into our last round, round three, um, unless we have some extra time for some follow up questions from the journalists. So I will start with Dylan.
And I have another question from Simpson Street Free Press and the students, and it's for Blair. So this week during the forum at East High School, you were talking about achievement gaps. And you said that we need fundament, or let me get this right. You said we need to fundamentally change the purpose of our schools and their structure. Isn't the purpose of Madison schools to provide an excellent education to every student? So do you mind clarifying those comments and talking specifically about what you think needs to fundamentally change?
Oh, for sure. Um, so so an excellent education is not, um, it's not something that comes off the shelf, right? Education is for a purpose. Um, different societies, different cities, different time periods, educate young people in different ways. And so when I talk about what is, what is the education that we're giving students for? And when we talk about, we want competition, we want, we want um, success. All of these things are are based on the belief that um, that's an individual goal, right? I I am going to graduate with honors and I'm going to go to a fancy school and I'm going to get the job. Um, but that's not actually like the bedrock of a healthy society. Um, and so what I am interested in thinking about is how we take um, how we look clearly at our city and clearly at the future and think about what is our education? What is an excellent education for going forward? And to me, it's about an excellent education for future collaboration, for future um, peace, for future um, community support and community care, not for the individual success of some small number of children. And I think it is important to mention here in fifteen seconds that what people think of as an excellent education historically has actually only been available to a small number of students. Uh, and that that to me is a problem. I'm more interested in an excellent education for all.
Yeah, and do you mind if we just give Blair a little bit more time? It's like, so how do we do that, right? Uh, I went to Madison schools, I would say I got an excellent education. I know that wasn't true of all of my peers. So how, how do we do that?
Yeah, okay, so when, so I have all this classroom experience, right? So so my experience and I also have experience, I know people want to say, oh, you're just a teacher. But I was also an instructional coach, it was like a semi administrative role, lots of interfacing with district administration with the policies that the board passes to try and figure out how that lives in schools. One thing that I know to be true is that you can build classroom communities of learning that that build collaboration, that build understanding, that build trust, that build the, create the conditions for, there's my favorite phrase again. Deep learning, excellent education that's actually available to all. But to do that, what teachers need is lots of time because it takes an incredible amount of planning and lots of intellectual space, right? They can't be constantly thinking about which class I have to cover, um, which P D I'm late for. They can't be doing this in the um, in the back of their head, right? This is deep, intellectual, interpersonal, uncertain and creative work. And to me, how we do that is we create working conditions that actually support communities of deep learning in the classroom.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for clarifying all of that, Blair. Badri, uh, we will also give you a chance to uh, respond and, you know, answer this question um, around um, the achievement gap as you like.
Yeah, so definitely, right? So I am, I don't want to take programs out from school, uh, kids. And this is why you see the, you talk about dropping enrollments. This is what's happening. We don't, we don't, we're trying to create programs that is for broad and then we don't actually give the opportunity for kids to excel, right? So as I mentioned, we talk about achievements. When we talk about achievement, they're also talking about how many presidential awards we got and for uh, M M S D. How many achievements are kids, what are they going, where are they going from here after high school? All of these, we need to give them opportunities to climb. We need to make them excel. We don't remove programs. And that's where I I am puzzled way, the thinking is that we don't need any individual achievements. I do not agree. Individual achievements is also very, very important for kids to be, they have, we need to provide every kid their opportunity to climb. Give them the right medium to excel. That's what I'm talking about, right? We need to provide the medium for every kid to excel. It's just not, you cannot put a fish and a line, everybody in the water and thinking, okay, everybody will do better now. And so we need to have that right medium for every kid. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we can move on to our next question, which is from Olivia.
The district's behavior education plan has been scrutinized in recent years and it's likely that the plan will be revamped in the near future. Whether it is policy or implementation, what specific changes do you think need to be made to the plan, if any?
And let's go with uh, Blair for this one.
Didn't I go first last time? Sorry, I'll go first this time too. I did, it's okay. Um, so so, so I've talked a lot about how, how the, the technical aspects of the BAP and constantly tinkering with the technical aspects of the BAP. Is this or that behavior a level two or level three or four? Um, how many times does a student have to do X, Y, or Z um, to be suspended or whatever? I think that those technical questions and our, our over reliance on questions of the technical here are are not actually helping the issue. I would love to see um, an art of the resources that need to go into making it live in schools. Um, I would love to see um, speci- specific language about, this is so, this is, now this sounds really technical. How many days of welcome back prep are given over to deep discussion and deep building level planning for how you're going to talk to students about this stuff? Because that really matters. If you're trying, if you're trying to build a building culture where kids are acting right towards each other, right? Who who are, who are interacting peacefully. You've got to figure out how to talk to those students about it. And what's happening is we've got this document that's, that's standing in for the school based work. Um, and so I would love to see real attention paid to what are the temporal resources for school staff that need to be in place to make those technical bits in the BAP function?
Thank you. Badri.
Yeah, this whole behavioral education plan was built with the collaboration with the communities and parents and teachers. Everybody was involved in that, in the original stage, but it was built a long time ago and it's not working and it is not implemented equally in every school. And it's definitely not working at all. And we need to come back after post pandemic, right? This situation has completely changed. The way kids are behaving has changed, the way um, how staff, how staff are feeling. And the students are anxious to be in school. Safety is become a major issue now. We need to come back on that one. We need to come back and revisit, have more community involved and redo the program again.
Nikki.
Here's your education plan. One, it's too dang long. Two, what's important has to be searched for. I'm sorry, I'm not expecting every student and every teacher to know all, every single page verbatim. I just don't. Three, unfortunately, it was, it was originally created to stop disparities for individuals with disabilities and black and brown individuals. Unfortunately, they failed to talk to parents and students who are black and brown. Parents of kids with disabilities or kids with disabilities themselves. They also never talked to the teachers who were implementing the plan. There's no way you could get a plan that has teeth if you don't work with the person who's actually implement. If we're going to do it again, we need to meet with the groups we actually say we're trying out. And first and foremost, we have to work with our staff who's carrying it out. Because if they say it's not doable, then it's not doable.
All right, this next question is from Scott.
Yeah, I would like to follow up on the discussion of competitiveness uh, at Tuesday's forum at East High School. Why is the principle of competitiveness a good or bad thing for Madison schools right now?
Uh, Badri.
Competitiveness is very, very important, right? We are competing everywhere. It's not just about schools. It's competition, competition. When you go outside in the world, there's a competition area, or you will go to workplace. We need to bring the competitive teachers to school, schools and to M M S D so that we have students have the right to the resources. The competitiveness is very, very important, so that will uh, excel our kids. That's, that's what my goal is to bring the competitiveness from every aspect, whether um, being the district that is competitive. There is um, subjects that are learning are competitive to the current world. We're not learning that we can, we can go to workplace that will meet the needs of today's needs, right? So either it's a workplace or the next college um, where they're going, we need to have those courses in there. So for the kids, we need to have that competitive um, subjects in there. We need to compete for uh, teachers from other districts because um, because of the turnover, everybody's having a teacher shortage. So we need to have that competition from bringing the staff um, as well. Thank you.
All right, Nikki.
Very simply, when it comes to this issue with teachers, we do not have a teacher shortage. We have a teacher access due to the lack of respect in the way we treat our teachers, the way we treat our staff. Until the nation as a whole realizes that teachers are not expendable, this is going to continue. So we have to learn how to work with it, not figure out what cost. Number two, well, yes, we have competitiveness. I'm a coach's kid. Father was a college basketball player. I was raised with competition and I've seen how it can motivate and how it can destroy based on how it's done. You need a balance of both. You can't have a completely non competitive society and then expect kids to be able to do well. But here's the problem. Our kids right now, after the pandemic, are competing for absolutely whatever little resources they can get, whether it be money for education from this legislature, whether it be time with their parents who may be working two to three jobs. Or maybe just simply competing with their peers just so they can have time and resources and attention in their own classrooms. So we need a balance. Without it, we won't do, we will not succeed after this pandemic.
Blair.
I know it's a deep questions. So competition is fun when the rules are fair and everybody um, has agreed to play. Um, but in our society, the rules are not fair um, at all. They come down on class lines, on race lines, on ancestry lines, on gender lines. They are, they are not fair. And so my, my issue with um, competitiveness as like a central value for Madison schools is that we're, we're sending our students out into the world to to claw their way through, right? Those, those meager resources. I know that um, Badri loves to talk about the American dream, but actually, the American dream is designed to not be available to everybody. And when I think about what is education for, what, what do we want in our town, right? Not generally, not every single school in the whole world, but what do we want Madison schools to have education for? To me, it's not so that our kids can do the best climbing out of um, just like the, the muck of a society that is not fair, that is not designed to, to meet everybody's needs. And you know, that's, that's a really good question because it does get to some core values of mine, um, which is that there is enough for everybody. Uh, but it is distributed unfairly. Time, thanks.
Thank you. All right, this next question is from Kajada.
Joanna Hoskins is a teen editor at Simpson Street and the current student rep on Madison's school board. Last fall, Joanna published a piece about transparency at M M S D. She quoted Tom Kamenick of Wisconsin, of the Wisconsin Transparency Project, who said, "The only reason it would ever take this long is that they're not making this a priority." Joanna also quoted Bill Luters of Wisconsin's Freedom of Information Council, who said, "The school district has an obligation to provide records as soon as practicable and without delay. I don't think it's meeting that obligation. If elected to the Madison school board, how will you address the district's poor track record in complying with Wisconsin Open Records Law? Will you make this issue a priority and how will you address it?"
Nikki.
Very simply, we are not fulfilling our responsibility in fulfilling open records requests. We are not making it as a district a priority. This is something I have fought for, for the past six years. Right now, we still take an average two hundred and fifty days to fill requests. That's not, and that, that was on one particular one. I'm citing my own and I, that I And I, that I filed, it took that long to get filled and I didn't get all the information. That was quite some time. I understand open records requests take a lot of time. But here's the thing, we have a duty, we have a responsibility to be open. We, our public needs to know what they are getting. They need to know what schools are doing, what kids are learning. And we're not providing that information. So I'm going to continue to fight, continue to talk, continue to stress how important open records is and continue to update. I swear to God, it might be the most annoyingly read Facebook page when the district refuses to answer questions. And I have to post on my page on what's actually happening. It gets rather frustrating. So I hope to improve that in the future.
All right, Blair?
I think, I think part of this poor track record, we have a kind of a secretive sort of corporate model right now in MMSD's administration. So I think that's a piece of the puzzle. I think that, like I talked about earlier, I don't, I don't really think that this like model that not just MMSD, but lots of schools want to adopt, which is like, we have the answers, we're gonna roll it out. We're gonna have this like epic march to progress, just watch us go thing is, is actually helpful for, for school districts. And I think that if we can, as a city, and I think a board member would have a role to play in this, right? Because you, you listen to public opinion, but you also have a role to shape public opinion and teach people sort of what, what is the, what is happening here? If we can move towards to be, to being a learning institution, I think that would help a lot. And then the last thing I'll say is before I decided to run for the board, before I took this job in San Pray, which allowed me to run for the board, I used to daydream about creating a little clearinghouse for much like some of these other projects for, for MMSD Open Records Request. Because staff are confused too. We're like, what is happening? Why won't anyone tell us what's going on? So that secretiveness is not just out to the public, but is also in, into the buildings and with staff.
For me?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, so I would say this is my areas of expertise, public records, open records. I've been working with the state government for the last 20 years. I have, I'm also been on several boards. So I've been on the both sides where I'm requesting, I'm also providing the data. I can use my extensive experience on bringing how to make this work better. It is both, both a responsibility to make sure this happens, right? This is both one of the main priorities, duties to make sure administration provides this data effectively. And I have, and not just talking about it, we need to provide them modernized ways of doing this, right? For administration staff, we need to provide the tools. We need to make sure we have the right tool for those administration staff. And also we have adequate staff that can respond, like in the banks today. If you, everybody attacks them at once, you still cannot meet that requirement. Let's say 100 requests comes in within the day and you have 24 hours to respond. You may not be able to, right? So there is, we can have modernized tools that, that is my expertise, that we could make this data, use the technology, IT systems, make it transparent for public to do anytime, 24/7. You don't need staff trying to do this for you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That was the last question for round three. We do have a little bit of time, so I'll open it up to our journalists to see if any of you all have a follow up question that you would like to ask.
I have one.
All right, thanks, Kajada, go ahead.
And this is to Blair. In a recent interview with the Capital Times, you said, "I would love to see someone who is skeptical of flashy initiatives, who really has a laser focus on the day-to-day classroom experience. Does this mean you would like to see the MMSD budget put more of its resources in the classroom at the front lines and in the, in direct support of students and families?"
Yeah, that's exactly what that means, for sure. I can expand on that a little bit. It's not that any given initiative is bad. It's that what, what we've been doing is we've been adding and adding and adding Band-Aid initiatives. When, and then what happens with that is, but none of them are bad ideas. I'm not looking at any particular initiative being like, that one was horrible, we should never have done that. But when you put all of your resources into stuff that surrounds the core experience, which is those classroom learning communities, and you ignore the needs of the learning communities, the classroom-based learning communities, you just don't have quality experiences for youth because that's, that's where they're supposed to be, right? That's, that's where we get ding for truancy, our kids in class. That's like what's actually required by law is that kids go, you know, that we call them seat minutes. And that, you know, I could talk for hours about how seat minutes is like not a helpful structure for thinking about student learning, but, but that is what we're charged with doing. And so I do want to see more resources at the classroom level, yes.
Thanks, Blair. Badri, would you like to respond? You can.
Oh, good, thank you.
You all do have two minutes each for your closing statements. Let's see, we will go with Nikki first.
Hi, as you know, my name is Nikki Vandermeulen. I asked for your vote on April 4th because I voted, I am a voice for the voiceless, even though right now I don't have. I, I want our students to have the best at MMSD. They need what they need, resources, they need teachers, they need staff, they need support. I don't want the flashes. I don't want that, which gets more, gets so much. Let me scrap it. What I want out of a school is one that cares about its students more than it cares about its grade point. One that cares more about if a student succeeds, not just at school, but in life. And right now, I think we've taken the joy out of education. And that joy needs to be back in order to get education to truly work. I ask for your vote on April 4th, to vote Vandermeulen, the longest name on the ballot.
Thank you, Nikki. All right, Blair, go ahead.
I'm Blair Musner Felson. I'm running for seat six of the Madison Metropolitan School District Board of Education. I've been serving Madison Metropolitan School District since 2014 as a teacher and instructional coach at LVM Elementary and then at West High School. I asked for your vote because schools are complex and it is not possible to make good choices for schools if you don't understand how schools work. I really understand how schools work because I have a lot of experience working in schools. That kind of experience, you can't substitute generalist experience for the specific experience of working in a school. I care about Madison youth. I have taught hundreds and hundreds of Madison students. I care about Madison and I want to see our schools respond to the world that we're actually facing in a way that serves all students. Please put for me on April 4th.
Thanks, Blair. Badri?
Hi, yeah, my name is Badju Lankhella, the second difficult name on the ballot on April 4th. I would say an effective board needs a strong experience leader with this critical thinking. I've been rooted in the community for 20 years and remain a community for the opportunity to serve in the school board. I'll bring collaborative, community-minded leadership to every meeting. And I will listen and communicate with respect and civility. The choice is clear. You want somebody who can bring your voice, the community's voice, to the board, who has experience bringing the transparency to the community, who has experience managing your tax dollars, right? And making that transparent tax dollar, right? It's a $500 million budget. It's not something that you learn on the fly. You need to have somebody with an experience can do that, right? So bring the transparency to you. That's what I am here for. And finally, I wanted think about DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. We talk about it all the time and we don't have that one in this board right now. There is no representation from immigrant community, there is no representation from Asian community, there is no representation from vast Madison. There is a high percentage of enrollment and staffing are located right now. I want to bring that. I want to be your voice. Think about that one before you vote on April 4th. Thank you.
So I want to thank the candidates for participating this evening and a very special thank you to our panel of education reporters for helping us bring important information to the public. This Q and A session will be available tomorrow at simpsonstreetfreepress.org and on our Facebook page, our Twitter feed and our YouTube channel. The video will also be distributed through local news outlets during the coming week. So again, thanks to all of you for participating and thank you to our viewers for watching. Remember to vote on Tuesday, April 4th. And please always remember, never hand in your first draft.